So, good evening, everyone. We will call this evening's meeting to order. Please let our minutes show that our council is in attendance, as well as members of our staff. Do you have anyone on line?
No.
Okay. You want to add three approval of consent agenda? There's nothing for that. I have collected. Okay. Item four, approve of the agenda for this evening.
I move that tonight's agenda be accepted as it is presented.
I'll second that, Councilor Walton.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Anyone have those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item five, a turbulenter minutes from the previous meeting of March 11.
Councilor Smith will move to approve these as presented.
I'll second that, Councilor Pundish.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item six, government of conflict credentials. Anyone this evening would like to declare? No? Okay, we will move on to item seven, correspondence and presentations. We did receive a letter from the Rising Health Networks and the Organ and Tissue Program highlighting Green Shirt Day on April 7th, which was yesterday, right? And National Organ and Tissue Development this week, which is April 20th to 26th. Item 72, we did receive a letter from one of our citizens, Jim Appleby, and he has concerns about the state of the roads on Prince and Carleton Street. And generally, Finance and Infrastructure Committee takes the lead on determining the priorities for street resurancing and such stuff. If council is comfortable with that, we could leave that letter with the committee and let them read through the concerns that were raised in that letter.
May I say something? This letter needs to be addressed because Jim complained about this two years ago and nothing has ever been done on that street by his house in his own great big monster pothole there. And it's never been even gravel put in it. It's got, that letter has to be addressed.
So, would that be canceled desire then to leave that with the Finance and Infrastructure Committee? Okay, thank you. We do need a motion for that.
Councilor Smith will make motion to refer the letter to the Finance Inspector Committee for further review and report back to council.
I'll second that. Agreed.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions?
Yes. How long will it take to get it, to get their reply back from committee? We need on Tuesday. Next Tuesday? Yes. So, we'll have a reply back two weeks from now?
Well, I think there would have to be some discussion about which streets will be considered for this, this season, correct?
Yeah, we'll have a recommendation based on what's in the letter. Haven't had a chance to read it, know yet.
Okay.
We'll bring that recommendation forward, Councilor, at our next meeting.
Thank you. Okay, any other question or comment?
Would it be too much to ask, Mr. Allen? If we maybe reach out, tell them what our plan is that we are going to meet and review our roads, at least to know they're working on it?
Certainly, we'll do that.
I think that would be easy.
Goodbye, I want to be done further online.
Awesome, that'll be corporate. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Okay. No other questions or comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item eight is our council reports. Starting with mine, I attended all regular and committee of the whole meetings on March 5th, got the opportunity to be in the Finance and Infrastructure meeting. March 21st, there was an RC, RSC meeting and there was an RCM presentation, much like what we had here the other night with the sergeant. And on March 22nd, I was invited to the Legion, where they were giving certificates of appreciation to different members of the community who had been supportive of the Legion and to the town of Hurton received one. So, many thanks to the Legion for being a helping. It's nice to be able to support a group that supports the citizens as well. So, that's my report. Deputy Fair.
Thank you, Your Worship. In your council package, you say document that details recent Finance Infrastructure Meeting with our representatives from the Department of Transportation. And much of that has been touched on in the past. That's there for your review. On March 18th, Finance and Infrastructure met at our regular meeting. And we touched on, if I could just go through some of the items. So, as you know, the town has been without a backhoe and replacing that or replacing the services of the backhoe has been an ongoing issue and it still is. We are making headway. Our Director of Public Works has been leading that charge. There will be more to, more updates on that coming forward. So, we reviewed the DTI meeting at that meeting as well. We had an update from our acting clerk, as well as Director of Public Works on the Winter Project. Facility manager and public works brought us up today on the complex water flow and other requirements from the fire marshal. one of the things that have been, or will be advocated for in our upcoming meeting will be further discussion reviewing our strategic plan and our capital plan. As part of that, I asked our treasurer to provide us with a list of our current loans through the Municipal Capital Borring Board. And it, as is her custom, she's provided all the appropriate detail of when the loans originated, payments, process, that sort of thing, because we'll be looking to go back through the Municipal Borring Board based on what our final data following that meeting. And our new CIO was wise in suggesting that that meeting not take place until after the by-election. So, not only will it be good for everyone that's around the table right now, but it will serve as a good orientation to our council when that kind of happens. So, in addition to that, Your Worship, I attended all regular and committee of all meetings as well. That's my report.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have any update on the backhoe? Jed had said that there may be, and here said there may be, you may have options. Is there anything?
Nothing in the one heard at this time. Not good later on that.
Thank you.
Jed, just a quick question.
Got one.
And my apologies for not being able to be at the inspector meeting, but has there been some, some discussion within that committee about the possibility of maybe a mini excavator or something more than a backhoe or different than a backhoe?
That's definitely on the wish list. The trouble being the backhoe is a very versatile machine.
It's mobile.
It's mobile. We use a load truck. Like, it's, it's between the one.
For self loading.
Yeah. So, not as fast as, you know, the job to do away.
John, I.
Financially, we could work some option that, yeah, we're looking at just one machine.
And it does do more than just dig. What about?
Thank you, Deputy Mayanna. We will move on to the legal. I have Counselor Britton.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Britton attended all regular council meetings. Thank you.
Counselor Patterson.
I, Counselor Britton, I've attended all regular council meetings, council of all meetings. We just wanted to make note in lieu of, before I forget, our grand opening for a facility in, we're thinking September, is that October?
October, fall, fall, come December.
My, my only point being that we, if we have a date nailed down sooner or later, there's about three different people who I'd like to invite early because they're traveling from Par, so that it wouldn't be a priority if we could pick a date sooner or later to get the invite out to the facility. Normally, money that they have to fly from our best or from the US in. I think now with what's going on, they want more notice than usual. We travel across the country and cross borders as well. So, if we want to fire that down a little harder and talk to the high school maybe, but when their season starts or however you want to schedule that, it'd be, it would be advantageous for us. And that's all for me.
Thank you for bringing that up. Counselor Smith?
I've attended all regular meetings and council of all meetings. I was able to attend the, both meetings for the infrastructure meeting, I guess, for March. I was away early March and I was just unable to attend the 18th. Got to have been in contact with other partners and library folks and those looking to the painting on the green this summer. So, I'm keeping in contact with those individuals and others. So, that's my report.
Thank you, and Counselor Walton.
Thank you, Your Worship. I, like everyone else, I was able to attend all council meetings and council of all meetings. And I was also able, I don't know, I know that you were there. We were able to attend the Fireman's Breakfast last Saturday. There was, was it 500 people?
Eight or 450.
Eighty-five.
Well, rounded up, 500 people. It was, it was very well, very good breakfast. Very.
There is an election on.
And even though there was a fire call in the middle of the breakfast there, it was still, it was good. It was very good. It was really good. And that's all for me.
Thank you.
I only want, I only got one piece of bacon, though.
I got dough before you got there.
It was thick, though.
Item 91, agenda is special reports. I see none. And business gunfire meeting. Item 10, none for that either. So, we'll move on to item 11, which is new business. And I will turn this over to our CIO.
So, last meeting, council reviewed the draft proclamation light up standards and vice policy. Requested further, since then I've reached out to some neighboring municipalities. And they do do things a little bit differently about things on the things similar. I don't know if this policy is similar to the.
Okay. And council has an opportunity to review the policy. Okay. So, we do have a couple of options for motions.
I guess before I was read the motion, I had a bunch of reserve. Did anyone get a chance, or everyone get a chance to read this?
Yes.
And does any sense, might, really, any changes needed? You know, information to be added? I think that is, we're good.
We're quiet this evening.
Yeah. I think that the, I mean, it's, it's a policy we need. And we look to the back and the responsibility of the CIO, who does make the responsibility for ensuring compliance. I mean, if we adopt this policy and accept a motion as presented, then, you know, if there's a problem in the future, we can always make amendments or changes. So, it's starting point, and we're reviewing this on last Sunday night. I saw no reason why I wouldn't put my name stamp and Google on this as well.
Thank you.
If you'd like to read the motion to adopt the appropriation light up banner and flag policy number P dash 016 as presented.
I'll second that, Counselor Walton.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Standing discussion and question on this policy is motion.
No, that's good.
Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Thank you for that. We'll move on to item 112, Residential Development Grant Policy. P dash 09 dash 02. And we will have our treasurer discuss this.
Great. So, like laws, bylaws and policies, when you begin to put them to practicality is when you start to see some of the things that perhaps we should have thought a little further about. So, in our development policy, one of the items that was in there actually says, once council approves that an application for a development policy, it is the following year before we actually issue them their funds based upon policy current living rates. So, once I saw that, I went, oh, that could be considered problematic. So, I also looked at a couple of other things, reread the policy and just had a couple of small suggestions. So, just for clarity, we wanted to change section 6.4 that reads the calculation of grant should be based on municipal tax rates applied. We wanted to change that line to read, the calculation of grant should be based on the municipal tax rates in brackets, local tax. Because when a developer actually sees their tax bill, that's the line they see. So, we wanted to make it more clear as to what we are often are incented on. Suggest that we remove section 9.1 that says the town will only receive and accept grant applications between January 1 and July 31st. We basically did not want to, well, make a deterrent to our developers that they had to fully apply during those months. So, basically, they couldn't apply anytime, at least on there. Decision. Removed, just to be clear, we're not removing the line that says applicant nails in a seat then look to heartland's treasure. But we are suggesting that we remove line 9.3.2, which says one copy of each related building permit. So, long before this process begins, we have seen the building permit and our grant and development. My words are stopped, do not. Director Dara has already got two years in advance. She has given us indication, hey, there is a building permit that's out there. So, we are aware of this process and should be aware of this process long before it gets to the point of the tax bill. The second line I'm suggesting that we remove is 9.3.4, a letter of reference from an OSFI approved bank to confirm the good financial standing of the owner. We're assuming that our owners, if they pay their tax bills or in good financial standing. I think that's kind of something we shouldn't necessarily have to ask for.
OSFI is?
That's a good question. I did not look that up, what it stood for, but.
I would say financial institution would be the final answer.
Exactly.
That would be a 50% mark on your test.
Thank you.
Office of Superintendent of Financial Institutions.
Thank you.
But you wish to add that?
I'll take 50%.
Is that close enough in minute to win it?
Yeah. How do you think I won?
Okay, 12.1, applications that receive a decision to award from council shall be paid between June 30th and August 31st of the year following the year of application. So, we wanted to change that to applicants that receive a decision to award from council shall be paid within two months of council approval. So, for those that apply later in the year, that allows us to determine which of our budgeting years we have that accounted for. And then, if those approvals go through, then basically that changes the application itself, the form P dash 09 dash 01. The section that's completed by the, the town, we would no longer require them, require them to have to build a permit, yes or no? We would change that to building permit number and date, which we would fill in because we would have already had that information. And we would remove the good standing letter required from. So, they just sort of follow already the law. So, not a lot of changes. The biggest change is that to, to change it from issuing the grant dollars in the year following the application to the actual year of application, which is the way we have budgeted for it for this year. So.
I guess that wasn't my question as long as it was part of the budget, right, for that front? Any other questions? Some questions for our session.
Thank you, Tina.
Well, this would save a lot of accounting back and forth of why we're in a loss in one calendar year versus a surplus in another. Would that be something that could save?
I didn't look at it from that perspective. I've looked at it more from the fact that we are following these right from the time they are building and trying, and anticipating that the year that they are fully taxed is the year they will come to the town for their participation in the grant, which starts before your cycle occurs.
And they still have the same options on when they want to come, when they want to start the cycle?
The only thing that is within the policy that put it back then is they have a timeframe from which the final unit is available for occupation. They have two years from now. So, after that, they are outside on policy and we're not suggesting any changes to that.
Okay. I'm, I'm sure that council adopt the amended policy P dash 009 dash 02, Grant for Residential Housing Development, as it has been presented.
Counselor Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item 11 and 3 is the Rockland Road Preconstruction Grant Application. And we will have our.
So, I have provided, Counsel, in your package, the business case, the two business cases that Dillon Consulting have provided. So, they worked on this for us to help us get ready for this application. So, there is one for water and one for sewer. We would be asking for 75% funding. And this would be for investigation into what municipal infrastructure upgrades are needed in the Rockland Road area to accommodate the new housing developments in the town. So, again, this is pre-construction, so it's all of the planning, the tender documents, like anything like that, that's the planning side of things. And then, once, so, once our application or if our applications are approved, we would move forward with that work. And then, we would submit another application after that, or two applications, to actually do the construction work or to carry out the work that's deemed necessary from the planning work and from this investigative portion of the work. So, the request would be that we could submit these two applications to RDC. And there is a proposed motion in your notes. So, there's two proposed motions, one on one page, one on the left, because there are two applications.
So, do they both have to go? Is this one of them?
No, both of them go. So, they, they have, RDC had suggested that we split it out and put all of the water in one and all of the sewer in another. So, that was by their recommendation from when that was done.
Counselor Walton, I'll make a motion to approve the RDC application for the Rockland Road Water Infrastructure Preconstruction Grant.
Counselor Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.
I still buy a thing much more than the, to approve the RDC application for Rockland Road Sewer Infrastructure Preconstruction Grant. Second that?
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Your Worship, I would like to commend our staff. I like the way that it's been presented as a business case with the, with the follow-up information and everything we need is right there. I want to look back.
Item 11.4 is clerk appointments. So, our clerk is currently Michelle Dara and the assistant clerk is Natalie John Nigga. So, we were discussing things and CIO Stockford would like council to make the following two motions. And they are there. And they are in regard as well to clerk and assistant clerk appointments.
I'll make a motion effective April 9th, 2025, to rescind the previous clerk appointment and appoint Julie Stockford as clerk for the municipality of Hurton.
Counselor Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing that, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.
I'll move effective April 9th, 2025, to rescind the previous assistant clerk appointment and appoint Jennifer Foster as assistant clerk for the, for the municipality of Hurton.
Counselor Patterson will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Question on that motion?
Question, just briefly, the rationale for that? Like, I understand John resuming his previous duties. Jennifer hasn't, he's been as involved as some of the other staff with certainly the clerk's role. If he's willing and able to do this.
CIO has had conversation with her. It's also nice to involve her, you know, a little more.
Absolutely, yes.
And they're more than capable of assuming those duties, so.
She also had the duties.
And, and John's okay with reducing level responsive.
You said she did, she's.
That's what we.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other question regarding this document? David, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. We will move on to 11.3, Recycling Community Plan. With our former clerk.
Wait until tomorrow, same.
Back to the long title.
I'm still the clerk until. So, the, so, grant, so, the request is actually to ratify a grant application because this was an application to provide $500 of funding that would help with community cleanup. So, it can help purchase garbage bags, gloves, those sorts of things for this project, including fuel, like to transport the garbage or the recycling afterwards. So, the request was to ratify it. And then, in the meantime, we got approved. So, it was a quick, it was a short window and it was a really quick response. But the, just as a housekeeping item, I am asking if council would ratify that application.
Counselor Smith will make motion to ratify the application on $500 to the use of supplies to host a community litter for cleanup along Main Street, waterfront and MB Trail.
I'll second that, Counselor Walton.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions?
Who approved this?
The application. So, it was an online one and I submitted it online and we were approved.
Is there a date that this is going to be happening?
So, the Recreation Department is taking care of that. So, John, did you, I don't know if you've been able to plan anything yet.
The, yeah. Planning will be Thursday, April 7th. We're just in the process of contacting school and waiting to reply, but to coordinate something with the, I guess, year of school and Recreation Panel, we can plan a bigger time that, on that day. That's the idea.
So, that's a Tuesday?
Correct.
Okay. That's great.
Thank you. Any other question? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item 11.6, the MLS Community Center Adventure. Item eleven six, D M L community center adventure. I'm gonna turn this over to our C A O.
Oh, the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation requires a motion to defend the interim financing for the complex to a adventure.
Be it resolved, Counselor Smith will move that be resolved, the clerk and or treasurer and or mayor be authorized to issue and sell to the Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation a local government of Hertford adventure, the principal amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on such terms and conditions as are recommended by the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation and be resolved that the local government of Hertford agree to issue postdated checks payable to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation as and when they are requested in payment of principal and interest charges on the above adventure. Counselor Walton will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question on this motion?
Do we have interest rate on the adventure?
Yes. So what's so? Did, and again, this is part of that purpose as we will explain that the finance structure moving on Tuesday. But basically, all we have received at this point is just a letter from the province whereby they are looking for um municipalities who actually want to turn their applications and their approved borrowing into a adventure. So they gather up millions of dollars, then they go and ask uh for a rate. So we will receive that in a letter sometime May or June, uh unless they have everyone's debentures put forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item eleven seven, R D C twenty twenty five grant application.
Okay. So I have provided a summary um of the items. You've seen a one pager. And I also provided additional detail in the clerk's report with the breakdown of everything because um the next two items on the agenda also touch on these projects as well. Uh so this application would be to R D C, uh and it's for um our April first, twenty twenty five to March thirty first, twenty twenty six, which is the provincial fiscal year. So the proposal would be uh for the application to include a fifty thousand dollar project for the Pavilion Park. That would be landscaping around the existing pavilion, adding pathway lighting, signage and information or historic plaques. Um and then we could engage the community through a fundraiser to assist with some of the project costs. So you'll see in the clerk's report where it's um broken down, there's an amount there for fundraising as well to how we come up with the fifty thousand dollar project. Um there is also um funds budgeted towards that from the town. So that's where we're getting our uh contribution to the project. Um and you'll see it does add up to fifty thousand dollars. Then in addition to that, we would be asking R D C for sixty um for a sixty eight thousand five hundred dollar project for library upgrade and that would be um replacing windows as many as we can replace basically for the funds that we have available, um which is going to improve the energy efficiency, repair the clock in the tower. Um and we would also be applying to N B Power's retrofit program to assist with the cost of window replacement. So I have confirmed with R D C that we can stack N B Power um retrofit program funds with theirs. Um even though they're both provincial entities, um we can stack those. Uh then the third part of that project would be upgrades um in this building. And that would be twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars. So that would be replacing some windows. Um switch from electric baseboard and wall air conditioner unit combo to a mini split to improve energy efficiency and also add a generator uh to use the space as a warming cooling center. And again, we would be asking N B Power um for some funding assistance for that as well through the retrofit program. So in total, it would be a hundred and forty seven thousand plus H S T. Uh and we would be asking R D C for forty percent of that project, which is sixty one thousand three hundred twenty dollars.
What was the, what was the ask again?
Um we would be asking sixty one thousand three hundred twenty dollars from R D C.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Smith will motion to approve an application for sixty one thousand three hundred twenty dollars from Regional Development Corporation for the Pavilion Bar, Park, Library, Hat, Raising Community Room Upgrades.
Second, my counsel.
Motion has been moved and seconded. I don't have any questions. I have a question. Will it make this room warmer?
Yes.
This is another question. Is there an assessment process?
For the N B, for the N B power part, yes. That's part of it. Um that's why the next motion would be for the energy efficiency program. And if council agrees to that, then we would be able to start the process to have the assessment done and the assessment is a hundred percent refunded. Um and yeah, and you'll see in the next um preamble there, it is twenty five percent for N B power.
Counselor Smith will motion to apply to N B Power's energy efficiency programs to eligible, for eligible improvements for the town hall and library sorted.
We just haven't, we haven't um
Oh.
loaded, yeah. If there are no other questions regarding um previous motion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Yeah, so eleven eight then.
So as discussed previously, um this project would also include some N B power um funding through their energy retrofit program. So again, in the clerk's report, it does break it down. Um there would be some for the library windows. Um and some for the windows in this building and some mini split are all eligible. So I've broken those out to show what that looks like. And again, the, these budgeted numbers are what was already in the budget, um the twenty twenty five budget for these projects.
Counselor Smith would like to restate most rapidly to apply to N B Powers and the efficiency programs for eligible improvements to the town of Town Hall and Library.
I'll second that, Counselor Walton.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question on this motion? It's a good breakdown um to be able to see special process specifically.
What do you guys have for supper?
I didn't.
Full of energy tonight.
Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. And for the third one, uh this one regarding Farm Credit Canada Community Grant.
Oh yes, Farm Credit Canada have a community grant um that is up to ten thousand dollars to go towards a community project. And I did reach out to F C C and they confirmed that um the Pavilion Park, what you were suggesting for a project there that that would be a suitable project for that type of funding. Uh so the request is for um council to approve that ten thousand dollar application.
Counselor Smith will motion to apply to Farm Credit Canada's Community Grant for ten thousand to support Pavilion Park project.
Counselor, fair to seconds that?
Motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any question?
So is it only, can we only use that money on the Pavilion Park? That's the only if we get the grant, that's, yeah. Great.
Okay. No favorite questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. The date of our next meeting will be our committee of political meetings on September twenty second and a regular council meeting on May thirteenth.
I would move that we adjourn.
Close session?
Close session. The call is finished.
Thank you. The seconded?
I'll second that. Counselor bottoms.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.
Royce. Wait.